The time has come for the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Wallkeegan City Council. Roll call please.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozzio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mary Cunningham.
Present.
Thank you. To lead us in invocation will be by Pastor Anthony Morgan of Christian Valley Missionary Baptist Church, located at 2690 Argon Drive, North Chicago, Illinois. Right after the invocation, the ladies to my right will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise for the prayer.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come before your throne in grace. We come with humility, we come with adoration, we come with praise for who you are. We come, Lord, saying thank you for touching us early this morning with your divine thing of love, allowing our eyes to open up to see the beauty of a brand-new day. You gave us a portion of our health and strength, gave us traveling grace throughout this day, Lord. We just want to pause to say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for this very moment that the power of the Holy Spirit can be in this place, Lord, in this council meeting. I ask you now, Lord, to allow your favor, your blessings, to fall on the mayor, Sam Cunningham, and all those who come around him, Lord. I pray right now that the people here, that you have a powerful revival, Lord, that love and peace and joy can come through us all, Lord, that we uphold the power of your word, God, because you said in your word, "Lord, if two or three are gathered in your name, you're in the midst." Lord, we know, Lord, there are some things going on in this world, Lord, but you said in your word, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn from our wicked ways, then we are here from heaven." All we ask from you, Lord, to move in this place tonight, and, Lord, let everything be done decent and in order, that, Lord, the city of Waukegan, Lord, can be powerful as a powerful unit, Lord, that every other city can know, Lord, there's still love, there's still harmony, there's still peace. And, Lord, we give you all the praise and all the glory, because we know that you are still omniscient, you are still omnipotent, you are still omnipresent. So we thank you in advance for what you're going to do in the city of Waukegan through the mayor and through all those who surround him, Lord. We give you praise, we give you glory. It's in Jesus' name we pray, and every heart said, "Amen."
Flags right here, ladies. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To the aldermen and to the public, we just want to remind everybody that we had some recent water main breaks as we're moving through to, you know, the testing of our water lines. We have a major one that was on Washington and Green Bay Road. Really got that because we had the water walk. So I want to thank all the businesses for being patient and understanding. The water main break broke on Washington and Green Bay at 3:31 a.m. It did not get fixed on Friday, did not get fixed until, I think, about 7 o'clock. So their water was off. So aldermen, for those who have businesses over there, let them know we appreciate their patience and understanding as we go through that. Second, we send our condolences to Pastor Brown and his family. Their mother of 99 years of age passed this past weekend. Mrs. Brown lived in her home on 222 McKinley for over, I think, 70 years. So she's 99. We all celebrated her birthday. The mayor's office, the city clerk's office, police and fire department went over there and gave her a Wallkeegan Proud Award, so we were very excited. But as we, the family moves to the grieving period, we send our condolences from the mayor's office, all the aldermen, all the citizens of Waukegan. We ask that you keep that family in your prayers. Back to school. As we all know, our young men and ladies from preschool, elementary, middle, and high school are on the way back. Folks, last, please be mindful as we go through school zones. The chief and I, the police chief and I, while we talk, we're going to have, we will be having traffic officers out. If we find those who are speeding in those school zone areas, we will be issuing the appropriate citation. Parents, we're dropping off your children. You can drop your children off without walking them into the building. I know Greg, Alderman Mozzio. It is causing major congestion in our neighborhood schools. For those who do not know, the city of Waukegan really went to, what Waukegan Public School just went to, and your middle school and your elementarys and preschool is neighborhood schools. So you're jamming up everyone from going to work, because our parents love you to death, but once that child is on the school grounds, it's okay, we have them, let them go. All right? So please be mindful of that. Upcoming events, Three Brothers Theaters Spring Awakening is Friday, September 6th, 7:30 p.m. For all of you who are here and normally here, you get a chance to know what's going on in Waukegan. That's a plus. The musical will be performed Fridays inside the stadium end of September. Waukegan Main Street's annual wine art stroll will be Saturday, September 7th. Check in at Jack Benny Plaza. Information is available at thewaukeganmainstreet.org. The Waukegan Fire Department holds its annual 9-1-1 Remembrance Ceremony on Wednesday, September 11th, at 9:00 a.m. at Fire Department Memorial Park. The Waukegan Exchange Club will host Healing Fields at 5:00 p.m. That same day at the Haight-Pervonian Park, which is located at Sheridan Road and Grand Avenue. The cult film Napoleon Dynamite and A Conversation With The Stars kick off the Genesee Theater's packed fall and winter schedule Thursday, September 12th. See GeneseeTheater.com for a complete list of shows and concerts. The Latino Coalition's Annual Noche de Gela supports their scholarship program and recognized community leaders. This event will be held Friday, September 13th, at Deer Path Inn. To secure tickets and form information, email clucorg@gmail.com. Fiesta's Patches Parade will be celebrated with a two-day festival and parade. If you don't know why these young ladies are here, they are all competing, is that correct? Competing for the Fiesta's Patches Parade queens, is that correct, ladies? Okay. The festival will be Saturday and Sunday, September 14th and 15th, starting at noon at parking lot F on the corner of Sheridan Road and Water Street. The parade will be held Sunday, September 15th, stepping off at noon from Butchrick in Washington and heading east on Washington. All right. What are we going to do here?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I was going to make a suggestion that number five be moved up, which was the thing we heard, number five, which was what we heard in the Community Development Committee.
Yes.
We can either move it up before audience time, but there was a little resistance to that, or immediately after audience time. I don't need to hear any more testimony, I'm going to deny the purpose that I have. Now, I got, and it's not about inconvenience me, it's about inconvenience all those people that are standing out there, that are probably going to fall out, it's not going to be voted on until midnight. So we can vote it early, or we can wait until we go through all this other stuff. You guys got to wait for us to pay bills, and then we're going to vote it, and those people out there are going to be out there for a while. So I was just, not about inconvenience me, I'm in for a long haul, as my friend said. I'm here all night if I have to be. But it's about inconveniencing some other citizens who have to stand because we're at capacity.
Okay.
So if any of the other aldermen would make a suggestion on that, that's, I'm all for.
All right, let me do this. We're definitely going to do that, we're going to move it up on the agenda. So item five will be moved up, and it would be moved right, it would be moved to item two, but there is three small things that we need to do, and the mayor's comments, and we'll get that done. I'm a motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Rivera, one at that appropriate time, all right? Three small things we have to do. Dog park. We're excited to see the opening of Lake County's Forest Preserve of their large and small dog park at Delaney and York House on Friday, September 13th. The project has been in the works for the last three years with local support, including from our very own Commissioner Diane Hewitt. Commissioner Hewitt has asked to say a few words as related to that. Commissioner Hewitt? Diane, come on up.
We love dogs, I do.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I'm excited, this has been a three-year project to bring this dog park to Waukegan. It's state-of-the-art, it's ADA accessible, and it is the only dog park from the forest preserve that carries this status. No other dog park in Lake County has the amenities that this dog park has. It's an 11-acre dog park, one acre is for small dogs, 25 pounds or less. I'm a small dog owner, so we have to get those in. But there's a lot of things with it being ADA accessible. We have 60 parking slots in our parking lot. We have shade shelters for large dogs, small dogs. We have many benches and such all through the dog park. So if you're out there and you get a little tuckered out, you can take a rest and play with your dog. But it's something I'm very excited about. The forest preserve will be having its grand opening on Friday, February, oh, sorry, February's on my mind, sorry, September 13th. And it will be open at 6:30 in the morning. I will be there with my dog. I expect all of you to come. For the month of September, because of this year delay with turf problems, and it is a dry dog park, so your dog will not go and get all muddy like other dog parks, it's definitely dry, and because of that, our turf is very important. But since there was a year delay and the turf problems, the forest preserve is offering daily permits free for the month of September. So please, come and join me, we're going to have a lot of fun, and I'm excited to be able to bring this to the city of Waukegan. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Good job.
Not the day for the moment, it is Friday, 13th.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate that. The second thing is going to be, we're going to ask Maritza. Maritza was our 2018 Junior Miss Waukegan. She created a free summer workshop to teach children cursive writing.
Because they can't learn in school.
We've got some names in here who had to cursive write first, then print, right? Yeah? The workshop ran every Sunday, and she's done a phenomenal job of representing Waukegan and getting her back to her community.
Where are you at, Maritza? Is she here? Come on where you are. Oh, wow. You come on, man.
All right, let me read this. We're going to present her, it's called a Waukegan Proud Award, and it says, Waukegan, the city of Waukegan, do about here, everybody presents Junior Miss Waukegan, Maritza Escamilla. This Waukegan Proud, Proud Award in recognition of your dedication in summer-long efforts to run a cursive writing class at the Waukegan Public Library. And I'm going to come down. Everybody, you get to go to the middle, and you think you have all these people here, didn't you? No. You got a treat.
Isn't this something, ladies and gentlemen?
Let me tell you why we, myself and all the aldermen do this. Typically, you always hear our young men and young ladies who are not doing one thing to do. Our kids, they do some things, but we never praise or give that extra boost to our young men and young ladies who are going above and beyond. We decided, the city of Waukegan, to do this kind of Waukegan Proud Award. But let's know, we are proud of you. You're doing the things that we're asking you, and you continue to do that. Push you to your greatness, and hopefully this is an inspiration for you. So congratulations on behalf of the mayor, all the city aldermen, and the citizens of Waukegan. All right, parents, Jane is going to take a picture, and then you can come and take one after. All right. You're going to, so when you get to, she'll go to the mic. Yeah, so when you take a picture, she's going to the mic. All right, Red.
All right, they're looking over here. We're taking another, and then.
Parents.
Amanda, would you like to come up? Amanda, with the person who put her name in.
Oh. Amanda, it's the Waukegan Library, yes. Who's this, father, dad?
Oh, yeah. I have a grandpa.
Grandpa, come on up. All right, now she's going to take the mic and say a little few words over here, come on. We will bring it down to you. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Come right to the mic, so they can hear you.
I would like to thank Amanda Civitello from the Waukegan Public Library, Miss Maureen Sivia from St. Anastasia, my cursive teacher, Jane Ferry from the city of Waukegan. Without Jane Ferry's support, my class wouldn't have been that successful. The city of Waukegan is very lucky to have someone like Jane Ferry.
All right, Jane. Alderman, I've just been informed, because we have, everyone's not able to come in, when we speak, let's speak into the mic. Are we good out there? If we're good out there, raise your hands out there, any audience. All right. All right, so it might be a little loud in the inside of the council chamber, but we're speaking so everyone else on the outside can hear us. The last but not least, I want to give a PSA, public service announcement. This week, September, what's the, when is the air show?
7th.
Oh, that's this weekend.
Yeah.
The best air show in the land is in Waukegan this weekend on Saturday. All of you are invited. Next, State Representative Rita Mayfield, are you in the house? State Representative Rita Mayfield. Alderman, State Representative Rita Mayfield has been asked to say some words during mayor's comments. State Representative Rita Mayfield, you have the mic.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Mayor Sam Cunningham, the city council, the members of Stop ETO, and to everyone here attending today and speaking on the important issue of ethylene oxide and specifically Medline's request for a stack height variance. On June 21st, 2019, the governor of the state of Illinois signed into law Public Act 101-22 that prohibits the use of ETO within 180 days of signing unless the entity shows it is capturing 99.9% of the emissions and reducing emissions to no more than point oh two, I'm sorry, than, more than point two parts per million. The bill also requires monitoring of emissions and inspections by the Illinois EPA for compliance. The goal of the bill is for companies within a specified time period to install a series of safety measures to ensure community safety and for the Illinois EPA to consistently monitor. We know that Medline has started installing equipment to reduce their emissions, but it's not enough. We are almost three months into the reduction period, and Medline's emissions are 500 times the limit, 500. The options available to Medline under the law are, one, reduce emissions to an acceptable limit within the law; two, install alternative methods of sterilization, such as what they are using in other facilities in other states, if it works there, it can work here; or three, under the 180-day rule, they can cease operation on January 21 of 2020 until they are able to meet the conditions of the law due to their noncompliance. To be clear, a stack height variance is not an option in the legislation at all, it is not there. It is a workaround. It is a workaround proposed by the Illinois EPA, who up to this point has provided misinformation to myself and other elected officials about the seriousness of Medline's emissions. I don't appreciate them telling me we don't have an ETO problem in Illinois when the data clearly shows that we do. I don't appreciate the Illinois EPA working against the citizens of Waukegan to help a business pollute not just us, but by increasing the stack height, push the poisons further out to neighboring communities. They know that the stack height increase will purposely skew the next round of testing results, as we will now not be able to compare apples to apples, but we will be comparing apples to oranges. It is essential that we are able to compare emissions without variables, such as a stack height increase, to ensure that Medline is compliant with the state statute. The Illinois EPA will have no choice but to do their job and protect citizens rather than big business. Medline will need to be the good corporate neighbor that they claim to be and install equipment to reduce their emissions or close their doors on January 21 of 2020. To the Medline employees in the room, just know that we also passed legislation to protect you. Should you develop cancer 10, 15, or 20 years down the road, you will be able to sue Medline, and they will not be able to use the fact that the government allowed them to continue to operate as a reason in their defense. As the state representative of the 60th district, a resident and taxpayer who resides within one mile of Medline, and as a daughter who lost her mother to cancer, I am respectfully asking that you vote no on the stack height variance request. Please allow the state of Illinois and specifically the Illinois EPA, who has done very little up to this point, to do their job without variable changes and in accordance with the law. Thank you.
Thank you, State Representative Mayfield. Before we go to the, before we go to the motion, I need to get something. I've just been informed by the fire chief, and I read, we had a microburst at York House in Lewis, major damage with cars turned over. So just be mindful as you're going, going home that that happened. Chief. Power allergies in it, so be mindful, folks, as we, as you leave or exit the building going to your respective homes.
York House in Lewis.
By the airport, by the Waukegan Airport. And the storm is now over the lake. I'm a weather guy now.
Is it right?
All right, all right, everyone. Listen, I got motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Rivera, to move item 5A up to item 2. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is passed and carried. Before we go, a motion to, we'll go, Mr. President, let's go to different, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Taylor.
The best, just as a point of clarification, make the motion to deny. That way, aye is to deny, just like we did committee, wanting to be.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. However, before we go with that motion, a note has been asked by the Medline Corporation to table, to table this issue. Is there any interest, folks, or body? You did what you do, let us do a weedy. Thank you. Alderman, are there, is there an appetite or a request or a motion to table? No?
No.
Alderman, no?
No.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Call for the question. There has been, it was asked, we want to get that on the record, that it was asked by Medline to table, it is on the record, and it was denied by the legislative body. With that being said, there's a motion on the floor by motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Taylor, to deny the request, we hear, to approve zoning calendar 2.
Deny.
Motion to deny zoning calendar 2589, a conditional use permit for variance on stack height for 1160 North Point Boulevard pursuant to section 10.2-7 of the zoning ordinance. This matter was thus heard, was really heard in the Community Development Committee. All right? Are there any questions to the motion? No questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Aye is to deny.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. As page nine. All right. Onto, onto audience time now. Madam Clerk, and I, and I'm going to say this, everyone, I know what you're here for, and I know you've had some long, some long conversations in the, in the committee. If we are going to say the same thing over, we respectfully ask that the issue that you came for, we've addressed it. So if we wanted to say the same thing over, we're asking to let those who have other items that they'd like to speak of, just let them go ahead and say that, and we, if they, if the petition comes back at another time, we'll deal with it. I hope that's okay, I don't want to sound that I'm, I'm not sensitive to what you came here for, but we heard you. The names that are going to be called, if it's related to the item that has been voting on, I don't know what else you can say to us tonight that's going to change our vote, unless you want us to change your vote. All right. All right. So Madam Clerk.
You have three minutes, I'm going to call Margaret Carrasco up.
I'm going to call Margaret Carrasco up.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to start talking meanwhile our young ladies come up here. Each year in the month of September, I know this may seem hard to believe, but I put politics aside, and I dedicate to promoting cultural events. Some people know me as Margaret Carrasco, but the persons who really know me know that I'm Padilla, Padilla. The Padilla family, my father, everyone knew him as Rudy Padilla, Rodolfo Padilla, was one of the first of three Mexican families that arrived in Waukegan. The US government went down to Mexico during the Bracero program to recruit thousands of Mexicans to, and they brought them by train to the United States to work in the fields. The Padilla family worked in the fields in Libertyville, and the rest is history. So tonight, today, I'm here to personally invite the entire community to our annual parade that we have on Sunday, September 15, kicks off at noon. I recommend to be there by nine o'clock. And I think Mr. Moiseo said it very correctly, it's a huge production. Oh, it, it is.
Extravagant.
Extravagant, you're correct. That is, that's exactly how to describe it. And so we are asking the entire community, whatever your ethnic history is, be proud of it, and come dressed with your ethnic clothing, okay? So as you can see tonight, the next person here that's with me, and then we're going to introduce the young ladies.
Good evening. My name's Hymena Mendoza, and I am part of the King's Year event that is taking place this Sunday, September 8, at the Lake Hurst Banquets in Waukegan. I want to invite all the young ladies and the entire community to be part of this event. This event will give girls the opportunity to be involved in many community events such as the Mexican Parade. Dresses will be given free to each girl by Margaret Carrasco. All of you guys are invited, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
So we're going to go right down the lane, on the line here.
I'm Marian Diaz.
I'm Sarah I Prado.
I'm Wendy Flores.
I'm Ellie Rosales.
I'm Meli Prado.
I'm Kim Munoz.
I'm Jocelyn Figueroa.
I'm Azul Delgado.
I'm Leslie Ramirez.
I'm Alejandra Benitez.
I'm Paula Cardenas.
I'm Sarim Maravio.
I'm Tania Mendoza.
Eliza Padla.
I'm Ayipidra.
Jocelyn Lara.
I'm Eric Ortiz.
Ariana Lopez.
Good night, everyone, and my name is Naomi Rodriguez. Hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, young ladies.
Thank you, Margaret.
I will see you.
This'll allow some room.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're going to move to the other speakers. You have three minutes. I'm going to call five names. Go ahead and line up on the east side of the room. Jackie Stewart, Tatiana Santa Maria, Gloria Sharland, Mimi Biskin, CJ Walton. Jackie Stewart, Tatiana Santa Maria, Tia Tanaka, Gloria Sharland, Mimi Biskin.
All right.
Are you ready? Go ahead, in your name, ma'am.
So my name's Gloria Sharland, and I'm here representing the Sierra Club, and I had some wonderful comments for you guys, but all I can say is thank you, thank you very much for your vote on the stack.
Would you like to enter those into our records? We can have the comments to the clerk, and they'd be a part of our official records if that's what you like.
Take up the microphone.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, all right. The next person up to the mic, just lift it up. All right, we're fine.
Tia Tanaka, are you talking?
Yes.
In line up. Jackie Stewart, Tatiana Santa Maria, Tia Tanaka, Mimi Biskin.
Hi, my name is Tia Tanaka. I am one of the core members of Stop ETO, and I am so thankful that you voted to reject the Medline stack height tonight. I am so thankful. Thank you very much, Waukegan, for being the leaders in this. We couldn't have hoped for a better partner and a better city government to actually protect us because the Illinois EPA has been failing us for decades, and, and we couldn't have done this without your help, and, and we're so grateful for having every single one of you, and thank you for listening to your constituents. Thank you for, for making this a better place to live. I came here prepared today, I had a very long speech about how we should not trust the Illinois EPA. Not only have they failed us for the past three decades, but they failed us in this specific instance. We had asked them for months to come and do testing in our air, to come test our air, and they refused. They told us we didn't have an issue, and it was because of the city of Waukegan that we got finally the testing that we needed, and we finally got to see the numbers that Medline was emitting. And no, these emissions were not coming from cars. These emissions were coming from the source, and that source is Medline, and that source is Vantage in our community. The USCPA tested Willowbrook. They didn't come here for us. When we asked them to have a town hall meeting, they told us, we don't think Waukegan and Gurnee have an issue. They didn't want to come, and they still, 10 months later, haven't come to our communities. They have forgotten about us. We don't matter to them. We know that we cannot trust the Illinois EPA. We know that they work for the polluters. We know that they work for these industries, and that's the reason why the EPA suggested the taller stack to Medline. That's unconscionable. It's absolutely unfeathemable what they are doing to us. We pay them, and they don't protect us. They protect them from liability. We'll forget their liability. I actually want as many cancer patients to sue Medline as possible so that their health insurance skyrocket, and they finally give up on ethylene oxide. They're not protecting us, and they're definitely not protecting their employees who are here today. They don't know how high these numbers are. And I listened to some of them earlier today during the committee hearing talk about, you know, how it's gas grill, grills, and riding bananas in cars. You know what? Sterigenics was tested. A month and a half after, the entire month and a half after, the numbers dropped down, and they were all steady. They weren't 26 and 10s, they were point one. You know why?
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Um, I'm not sure.
Mr. Tanaka, to the next spot.
Thank you.
CJ Walton, April Ritter, Diane Suria, Donna Handy. Go ahead and line up on the, on the east side of the room, please. CJ Walton, April Ritter, Diane Suria, Donna Handy.
As a Polish girl from the south side, I will respond to Suria. It's Surafka. We take any name that starts with an S.
Are you Diane?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you very much to the Alderman, to the mayor, to everyone here. Like Tia said, we could not be more shocked and ever grateful that this went through. Thank you for being the leaders in the community. We had hope, we had dreamed, we knew that you had the power, and you have certainly proved it tonight. I want to talk about the testing. You guys came through, you approved the testing. But here's an interesting historical fact. Medline started, I'm sorry, the air testing started in June. This is September the 3rd. We still do not have the results from the testing. August 6, 1944, the invasion of Normandy occurred. Eight weeks later, all of France was liberated. A whole country was liberated in eight weeks, and we are still waiting for the results of the air testing. This does not make sense. We're talking about the numbers at Medline, how high is high? I have them put it into money because I can understand money. EPA says you can only put out two pennies in ETO. Medline tested it $10. Two pennies, $10, and they're still operational. What is wrong with this picture? I don't know. But thank you, thank you, thank you for approving, I'm sorry, for not approving the 85-foot stack. Thank you.
Donna, Donna Handy, number, Donna Handy.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the Waukegan police, a situation where.
Let me talk it to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is better.
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the Waukegan police. My daughter was jumped on by a group of students. While she was jumped on, they came to the scene. I wasn't at the scene when they came to the scene, and there was another witness there that went and started being jumped on. The result of this, she had to go to the hospital, and now they're trying to throw her into alternative school. They won't give me a report card, haven't sent me a report card, and I'm trying to figure out what it is that I can do because they distorted my truth. I need to talk to the chief of police, but every time I go over next door, I'm not getting an answer over the resource I'm looking for. So where do I go from here?
Donna, why don't you do this? I think the chief is here. Chief, are you here? Chief Walton in the audience? If not, you give me a call tomorrow, and then we'll make sure you get a, a sit down with the chief or one of the deputy chiefs, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, the next name, Sarah Crawford, Barb Hernandez, Cassu Mueller, and Bob Calamore. Sarah Crawford, Barb Hernandez, Cassu Mueller, and Bob Calamore. To the left, please. My bar.
Hi, I'm Barb Hernandez, and I just want to say thank you so much for what you did tonight, and let's just hope that ETO is stopped throughout our country because it's everywhere now. It's in many other states. So thank you very much for being pioneers and leaders. I appreciate it.
Bob Calamore?
Bob, is she coming? Everyone, we found some keys downstairs in the female's washroom suite. You can't leave here. I know you're not going to stay and see it all, but you can't leave without the key. Those of you, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Bob, thank you.
Well, before I get to my comments, I'd like to reclaim the balance of my time from earlier to address Medline again. Can I do that?
No.
Right now.
All right, all right.
Bob, I know you talked, talking too much, they want to outside, but thank you, Bob.
415 McKinley Avenue was a blight upon our city. We may dispose of it, but it will be a stain on our government forever. 415 McKinley Avenue cost the city too high a price, and not just in terms of money or property values, but in terms of human lives. Two lives were lost, victim and perpetrator, in an act of senseless violence that might have been prevented through the simple exercise of civic leadership. 415 McKinley Avenue was tolerated to fester in plain sight. It lured many of our youth off the path of righteousness and away from church and school. 415 was acquired by this city through an irresponsibly generous giveaway to the building's owner. Yet in spite of that, I disagree with the notion we ought to get something from the neighbors in return for the land. Instead, we ought to give it to them with our blessings. After all, we gave a 60% profit to an owner who kept it derelict. The neighbors boarded it up, not the owner. The neighbors lived in constant risk of gunfire, not the owner. The neighbors invested here in good faith, seeking to raise their families and pursue the American dream, not the owner. Giving the land to the neighbors can be our way of saying thank you and sorry we let you down. 415 McKinley Avenue doesn't have to be a total loss, however. We can learn from the mistakes we made. Torn between loyalty to his mayor and his moral sense of right and wrong, Alderman Moiseo abstained from the vote to buy McKinley Avenue. The Moiseo family goes back generations in this town, and they have long played vital roles both as neighbors and civic leaders. So when he says the way McKinley Avenue was handled was wrong, we can hear the echoes of those values of good government formed in the heart of a Waukegan that still pulses with dandelion wine. Gambling is breaking this community apart like nothing before. We already have more gambling than people are comfortable with, and we are losing families that once believed in Waukegan as a place to live, work, and worship. And not simply because they oppose the casino, but because they see the way the administration is going about the process the wrong way. The issue needs wider study. Start by considering what the market had to say about our casino. Mayor Cunningham told the new son he expected to receive a dozen bids for our casino license. We got six, and two of them were from the same syndicate of taproom gaming owners. That's a red flag that warrants further study that includes an option B, C, and D. Waukegan can't afford to keep doing things the wrong way. Otherwise, the owner of 415 McKinley Avenue won't be the last to skate with our money in the wake of ruined lives and leave us with another vacant lot to dispose of. Thank you.
Thank you. The next spot, please, Chris Smith, Dorothy Nolan, Pablo Calix, Diana Verdet, and Dylan Verdet. That's Chris Smith, Dorothy Nolan, Pablo Calix, Diana Verdet, and Dylan Verdet. Go ahead and line right on up. Go ahead, sir. In your name?
Hello, my name's Pablo Calix.
Thank you.
So I'm the president of CLC's Environmental Club, and I just want to say thank you so much for helping us out and actually, you know, denying. Thank you.
Un pueblo unido jamás será vencido. Un pueblo unido jamás será vencido, y hoy recibimos justicia. Juntos nos paramos, subimos la voz, y hoy recibimos justicia. A people united will not fall prey to those who try to attempt to exploit us. And today, we got justice, but the fight isn't over because there are deep pockets over there, and we will continue to rise united. Juntos y unidos. Thank you.
Dylan Verdet?
Not going to be nearly as exciting as that, but, um, as Diana said, there, there's still quite a bit of a fight that's going on. In addition to the ethylene oxide issue, we're still dealing with the pollution coming from our coal-fired power plant. They have recently decided that they want to produce more acid rain in our community. If you have thoughts about this, we're having a informational meeting in advance of the EPA's meeting, and this informational meeting is going to be at 7:00 PM on September 25 at Whittier Elementary School. So if you have an idea or one way or another about whether or not you want more acid rain in the town, then you should come on out, check that out. Second thing is, thank you, council, once again. You're going to be hearing that a lot tonight, and I would like to say that I think we did good tonight. Thank you.
The next group, in line up, with Tom Tanaka, Laura Simmons, Dale Greason, Rob Calia. Tom Tanaka, Laura Simmons, Dale Greason, Rob Calia.
Thank you. I'm Laura Simmons, and I want to thank the committee for their consideration and time tonight. Our request for a motion to table the vote was because we heard the community tonight loud and clear, and Medline was more than willing to wait until the remainder of the abatement technology was installed to visit the stack issue. So that, that was the, the thought process there. So we heard you. We will continue with the additional abatement technology, and then as this plays out, we will see if it's potential to revisit so that we can address this the way that we've been requested to do with the EPA. So thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it. We're going to refrain from any more speeches tonight, so we will get out of your hair. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group. Becky Torres, Liallo Roman, Joe Sanchez, Jamie Yurva. Becky Torres, Liallo Roman. Becky Torres, Laviol Roman, Joe Sanchez, Jamie Yorba. All right. Celeste Flores, Robert Blanks, Yolanta Pometonco. Celeste Flores, Robert Blanks, Yolanta Stamatlo.
Evening, council. Thank you for your time. On behalf of Clean Power Lake County, we would like to thank you for your leadership and in denying the stack. Um, and like Dylan alluded to, I wanted, you guys all have received an email from me earlier today. But there's, um, two times that the Illinois EPA is actually going to be coming to Waukegan. The first one is going to be on October third, and they're going to be hearing public comments and for the Clean Air Act permits. And that's going to be at Whittery Elementary. And also on October ninth, the Illinois EPA is coming to listen on the coal ash rulemaking, and that's also going to be at Whittery Elementary. So these are two really important opportunities, um, for us to voice our concerns, our needs as a community, and to make sure that we are not, um, that everything that the Illinois EPA is doing is to our standards, to our community, for our health, and for our benefit. And so please read your emails. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I can give you more information. And then with my other hat, with Clean Power, with Faith in Place, uh, we hold an annual conference where we talk about environmental things that are going on. And there's always a bus that leaves from Lake County to this event. So it's going to be on Saturday, September fourteenth, at the Field Museum. It's absolutely free for anyone to come, so I'll pass around a flyer if you guys know anyone. It is, um, gear, the focus is faith and environment, uh, but someone doesn't have to participate in a faith to attend if they would like to. So thank you once again for your vote and for your leadership.
Brother Blanks?
Yes. Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Cavalry Movement for the Mind, um, once I wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation for you all for the denial and the variance. Uh, when we look at ethylene oxide, and my position on it is you, you don't put a eight-inch ethylene oxide knife in the back of the community, then only pull it out four inches and say, "We have reduced your level of pain by reducing the admissions." So we want it all the way out. Uh, this, I look at the families that was here earlier that spoke, um, the mother that spoke about her two sons that had, uh, suffering from cancer. These are some serious issues. Uh, my article here, it says... Ethylene oxide, a crime against humanity. These are some serious issues. This is something that should not be ignored, but I really appreciate you all for taking a step forward in the leadership in this county, uh, to deny the variance. So appreciations on that. But on another note, uh, we are, when we speaking of justice, we are still, as a community, looking to view and see the video from Avian Cotton. It's only right, the community is entitled to it, the grandparents and the family of that young man is entitled to it. We want the community to see that tape, and we really want you all to be very proactive, as you was here today on the ethylene oxide, and granting this family and the community the right to see what happened to Avian Cotton. Thank you for your time, your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Yolanta Pamatlo. I'm one of the founding members of Stop ETO in Lake County. And on behalf of our entire group, I would like to thank you so much for siding with the community. We've been advocating for ten months, and this baby victory really feels good tonight. And I also want you to know it's Waukegan that showed, that showed leadership with independent air testing. And once again, Waukegan is showing leadership with, uh, denying this increased act. So thank you for being the leaders in Lake County. We are watching you, we're supporting you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker, Dan Clark, Allison Ward, Mike Chu. Dan Clark, Allison Ward, Mark Chu. Amanda Morgan, Adrian Doherty, Blair Klein, Liz Doran. Amanda Morgan, Adrian Doherty, Blair Klein, Liz Doran, Diane Verratti.
Diane Verratti, twenty-five ninety-seven Club Home Lane in Waukegan. Mr. Mayor, if you had included this in your mayor's comments, I wouldn't have to stand here and tell people about the wonderful event on Saturday, September fourteenth. Look at you. You're clueless. I want to inform you. In Waukegan, we have, one of our most wonderful jewels is our park district, Waukegan Park District, a national award-winning park district, and one that's been in existence for over a hundred years. One of the arms of that park district is the Waukegan Historical Society, been in existence for fifty-one years. And on Saturday, September fourteenth, we are presenting the Twenty-Fifth Annual Oakwood Cemetery Walk. Oh, you just got it. Because I know you come to that, Mayor Cunningham, I do. So I want to encourage all the rest of you, and maybe the ones who are seeing this on YouTube, Saturday, September fourteenth. The shuttle vans start at noon from, uh, Lilac Cottage at Bowen Park. They go every half hour down to the beautiful, gorgeous Oakwood Cemetery on the south side of Waukegan overlooking Lake Michigan. Uh, you can buy tickets ahead of time for five dollars at the Jack Benny Center at Bowen Park, or at the Field House on, uh, Grand Avenue at Hinkston Park for five dollars, ten dollars the day of. Um, and this event highlights, uh, people who have served in Waukegan in a variety of ways and are buried in Oakwood Cemetery. So this year, as I said, it's our twenty-fifth. It will be my pleasure, pleasure to portray a flamboyant actress born in Germany, um, who was, uh, ended up to be a very wealthy widow. So if you have any diamonds that you'd like to lend me for that day, I'd be happy to use them because I don't have any of my own. Anyway, please put that, um, all of you, come on September fourteenth. It's a really great event, and it's a beautiful location, uh, and I invite you all. Thanks.
Thank you. The next five speakers, Mary Williams, Nelson Patterson, Kirsten Migalati, Emily Watts, Elizabeth O'Neal. Mary Williams, Nelson Patterson, Kirsten Migalati, Emily Watts.
Mayor, aldermen and women, thank you so much for your service to this community. I'm Mary Williams, and I stand in opposition to the proposed casino. As a lifelong resident of Waukegan, having worked here, raised a family of two, my husband and I have seen many changes. We oppose the casino because it is not a financial win for the taxpayers of Waukegan. As we understand it, the take for Waukegan is only three point five percent of the gross receipts. For an estimated one hundred million dollar casino, that is three point five million. When we do the math, it just doesn't add up. We are being sold on the idea that the revenue from the casino will pay off our one point seven million deficit in the current budget for first responders. That leaves one point eight million. But we will have to hire more police and fully staff the nearby fire department. At an all-in price tag of one hundred and fifty thousand each, we will spend one point five million on ten new officers and/or firefighters. Now we have three hundred thousand on the upside. Economists estimate that the casino will dilute the take Waukegan already gets from video gaming by at least three hundred thousand, if not more. So we break even or end up in the hole. Keep in mind, the revenue being proposed is a hundred million, but the casino in Elton, Illinois, is only pulling in forty million, and Joliet, seventy million. Plus, we have not factored in any increases in costs for social services, for gambling addiction, or other mental health issues. This is why we do not believe this is a financial win for Waukegan and feel we are being snookered. The attraction of campaign funding from video gaming friends and backroom deals with local developers is undermining our future. We deserve transparency and better representation. If you cannot give it on the critical votes in the coming weeks, we will have to demand it at the ballot box. And trust me, we won't forget. And I believe there are others in the room who will not forget. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nelson Patterson, and I'm here to speak, um, on the casino. I was going to speak on Medline, but, um, I also want to say thank you because I think what you did was the right thing. And as a veteran of both the medical device and pharmaceutical industries, there are multiple, uh, choices that Medline can make, and I think, um, you have a great, uh, vote tonight. But I do want to speak, I am providing you a handout that is an excerpt, two excerpts from the Union Gaming Analytics, August two thousand nineteen, report to the Illinois Gaming Board on site selection for the casino in the city of Chicago. And I have two points on there that I'd like to speak to. The excerpts are verbatim from the report, which you can find online, and it is readily available. First, on site selection, let's not kid ourselves. While we all love Waukegan, it is not a tourist destination. And Union Gaming Analytics report says, "A tourist destination is critical for it to be successful." Chicago report is clear, to achieve the financial target, you need a base of tourists who will already want to come here. Otherwise, your only patrons will be the local population. Waukegan lacks a tourism base, so the primary source of revenue will be local residents. That's a recipe for socio-economic disaster. Increased gambling addiction, increased poverty rates, and increased mental health and drug dependence issues. Read the excerpt in front of you. I may love Walmart, Anastasia's, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Sport Clips, but people will not choose now, nor in the future, to come to a casino just because they're close to any of those establishments. Second, let's be transparent with the community. The primary source of revenue will be from their spending. It's just how it works. The report says that, and these are experts who work across the country in a wide variety of locations. This is just another indirect way to tax Waukegan and Lake County residents and to enrich your political patrons. Let the residents of Waukegan know that they and their hard-earned money are the source of a casino's success. And when it fails, they will be left carrying the tax bag when it does not live up to projections. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, Carol Allman, Jasper Titus, Alvia Moy, Annette Dard, Karen O'Haire. Carol Allman, Jasper Titus, Alvia Moy, Annette Dard, Karen O'Haire.
Hi, I'm Carol Allman. I live at two thirty-six Stewart Avenue in the sixth ward in Waukegan. This is the first time I've spoken at a meeting, so please bear with me if I'm a tad nervous, because I am. I grew up here in Waukegan, in, in Alderman Mussum's Ward, in the fifties and sixties. We had, um, Johns Manville, Commonwealth Edison, the Tannery, Johnson Motors, OMC, the Coke plant at the lake. The, the city was filthy. As each of those industries closed down, people panicked, and the world was coming to an end, and the city was going to die. Well, it didn't die, and it's not going to now. If we pollute the city, it will. Everybody like me is going to move away. I just moved back eight years ago. I'll be out of here in a quick minute. Same thing happens when I go out to eat in Waukegan, at one of my local watering holes, or at a nicer even place. And sitting behind me are video zombies, putting their mortgage money in the machine, and I won't do it anymore. When my friends want to go out to meet, to eat with me, we meet in Gurnee, or Libertyville, or Winthrop Harbor, where I don't have to endure that behind me. And yeah, in some places, there's a little fence around it, la di da. But if that's the way you think of the residents of Waukegan, then you're doing us a disservice. We're educated, we're intelligent, we're creative, we're determined, we're hardworking. We want this city to come back to life in a new form, not with factories and our dads cashing their paychecks at the bar at seven o'clock in the morning like they did when I was little. That was fine, but it's not good enough anymore. I'm asking you to look at the people that you represent as good people, hardworking, determined, intelligent, earnest people who want to live in a city, not in Chicago Heights. We want to live in the city of Waukegan, an independent community, not a suburb, because we're not a suburb. We have our own identity, and now we have the opportunity to create a new generation and a new creation here. There are hungry artists begging to be here. There are hungry musicians begging to be here. There are people growing up here who have world fame as actors, musicians, painters. They're making a living in the arts. There are people working at the library to make it one of the best libraries in the nation. I moved back here in large part because the park system was so much better than anything I'd ever seen in my life. Please look at your constituents as good people, worthy people, and don't settle for the lowest common denominator when you make choices about what happens here. Thank you.
Janice Arundel, Joe... This, uh... I don't know. You're a little unpleasant, don't get it, Joe. Kara Kloss, John Alden, Linda Conroy. Jane Sarabet, Joel Unpleasantville, Karen Kloss, John Alden, Linda Conroy. Mayor, that concludes public time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's always, it's always a pleasure to, a pleasure to hear from our constituents and residents and business owners in our community. All right.
Okay, consent agenda.
Uh, item four, consent agenda. Uh, there's a motion, motion on the floor by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner, to approve the consent agenda, which includes four A. Items four A through items four Q. Is there anything that wants to be omitted from the consent agenda? Okay, there's a first and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, please read the, the various motions for A through Q.
Consent agenda, item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Item B, resolution nineteen R eighty-six, Run with the Bulldogs five K, Sunday, September twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Item C, proclamation, Pi Beta Sigma Fraternity, U Lambda Sigma, Chapter Day, September fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Item D, motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County Stormwater Management Commission and the Waukegan Park District for the purchase and demolition of two one nine Carnation Court and five four nine Love Street. Motion E, item E, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workers' compensation claim C six four five one nine one zero seven zero 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 one for a total of sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee. Item F, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle building department public officials liability claim one nine zero seven two two W zero three three for a total of fifty thousand dollars. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee. Item G, motion to approve, as presented in ordinance, extending a morgue... Item G, motion to approve, as presented in ordinance, extending a moratorium on single-room occupancy units through October 22nd, 2019. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Motion, item H, motion to approve use of city property and waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on September 14th, 2019, from 12 noon to 11:30 p.m. and September 15th, 2019, from 12 noon to 9:01 p.m. for Fiesta Patreos at La F, with temporary road closure on September 15th, 2019, for a parade from 11 a.m. till 3 p.m. from Budrigg heading east on Washington and ending at Genesee Street. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item I, motion to approve the use of city property and waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels September 25th, 2019, from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. for Waukegan High School homecoming bonfire at Waukegan Municipal Beach. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item J, motion to approve use of city property September 28th, 2019, from 9:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. for Waukegan High School homecoming parade, a Waukegan High School homecoming parade starting at Brookside Campus, heading west on Monroe Street to Lewis, heading south to Turn, and heading east on Washington to Macquarie and ending at Brookside Campus on Monroe Street. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item K, motion to approve Waukegan firefighters' request to hold a fundraiser, build a boot for the Muscular Dystrophy Association on September 12th, 2019, at Grant in Green Bay and Washington in Green Bay, from 9:00 a.m. to 3 p.m., collecting donations at stoplights. Item L, motion to approve the door-to-door cookie ordering solicitation from January 1st to January 19th, 2020, by the Girl Scouts of Great Chicago in northwest Indiana. Item M, motion to approve Halloween trick-or-treat hours for Sunday, October 27th, 2019, from 2 to 5 p.m. Item N, motion to approve all block property applications. Item O, motion to approve regular payroll dated August 30th, 2019, in the total amount Item P, motion to approve PBLC, holiday cash out dated August 30th, 2019, in the total amount of $3,248.70. Item Q, motion to approve vendor payments dated September 6th, 2019, in the total amount of $1,727,653.27.
Roll call.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass and carry. Item seven, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Bolton, to reconsider resolution authorizing disposal of property located 450 W McKinley Avenue. Any questions?
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Sure.
Alderman Florian. I just want to kind of explain, I voted no twice for this, and I sat down with Alderman Bolton and the mayor while I would have to say, this all happened before I was sworn in. I would probably have voted no initially, knowing what I knew then, maybe even knowing what I know now. But anyway, that's water under the bridge. This has happened. It was handled, it wasn't handled like it should have been, probably, but the two things that stand out for me with this property, the lot, people, is 25 feet wide, the lot. You're just not going to be able to build anything livable on this lot. And as Alderman Bolton has pointed out, there was a murder on this property. I kind of feel now we just need to move on, cut our losses, we won't have to mow it, we won't, you know, we'll get some property taxes down the road from it. So I just wanted to kind of explain why I decided to change my mind and vote yes for this, so we can move on, so.
All those in favor?
We gotta do a roll call.
Just reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, I'm gonna go backwards on here, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Florian, a resolution authorizing disposal of property located 450 West McKinley Avenue. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Motion pass and carry. Items eight, nine, and item 10, Alderman's tongue. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just quickly, I want to reiterate that I'm very excited about the dog park opening, finally. I get questions all the time about this dog park, so yay, it's finally happening, September 13th. I also am excited about the air show coming up this week. It's a great air show, it's a lovely event for families, and it's a nice way to show off our airport. And I want to thank my colleagues for voting tonight to deny the staff permit. We're not saying it'll never happen, we're just saying it's not happening now.
Right.
We need to be able to compare the air testing now with everything else, you know, you heard it all. So anyway, thank you, everyone, for that. That's all.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi, I just want to just clarify why I made the votes I did tonight. First, I want to thank the Medline employees for coming, and I want to make sure that the community understands that they are employees of Medline, and we have to respect their position. My reason for not voting for the increased stack height was, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the IAAP did not convince me, since there was no precedent on this, that this was something that needed to be done. I think it is best doing the way we are now, where we see, we have the scrubbers, we see what the results are, and if at that time we decide we need to increase the stack height, then that's when it'll be addressed. But now was not the time for me, and that was why I continued to stay with a no vote. Second, on this McKinley property, I will say from day one, I have never supported the amount that we paid for it, but I understand the property, it's a no-win situation either way. My concern as an alderman is I don't want to set a precedent of doing something for one family or one group of people and not another. So that's why I've continued to stay a no vote on that, and it is nothing personal, it's just for me setting a precedent. There are two block parties this weekend in the ninth ward, in addition to the air show, one on Saturday and one on Sunday, one in the Lancaster subdivision and one in the Regency Woods. So for those of you in those subdivisions, please come out and support them. And that's it.
Alderman Bolton. Yes, I'd like to announce our second cleanup operation, Clean Suite. It will be on September 20th, and the location this time will be at Velvetir and Beasley, and the time will be between 8 and 3 p.m. and officially going door-to-door. It's also on Facebook, so come out and support. There's flyers also out on the table. Secondly, I'd like to announce on October 19th, Mary's Mission Shelter is working on having a day of hope, and I believe they're also working on renaming the street or something of that sort. So put that on your calendar, and the location is 642 Dr. Robert King in Waukegan. And also, I was just given tonight a request for a block party on George. It was not Alderman's, just letting you know, it wasn't on the agenda, I apologize, but I did approve of it, so it will be on the next agenda. And that will be this Saturday at George Avenue, between 2 and 10 p.m. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I'll make this short. I'd just like to thank everybody that came out to speak their piece about the staff and all my fellow aldermen, ladies. This is how you get things done. I'd also like to thank our state rep for being here tonight, we don't miss the way you make it. I thank her for stepping forward and making her announcements. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, two things. We still have to make a decision on our gaming situation as far as slot machines. If we don't, I'm gonna make another motion for a moratorium until we get to Casino and straighten out however that goes. That's one. Two, I don't know that we need to be approving every special event block party. We have a staff that is far more capable at that than we are. And if somebody has a party, and they're not gonna wire city services, and it's not gonna block a street, I mean, I guess a block party could block a street, but, I mean, you know, something like that, why, for instance, I want to have a party at my, wherever, whatever, let's say it's people's choice, in their parking lot? It's their parking lot. Just as an example, let's say it's another town somewhere, wants to have a party outside of here. As long as they go through it, but then again, if they don't get their paperwork in, and it doesn't quite match with city council meetings, and trust me, Iris Vaneger, she's awesome, she's just doing her job saying, "You're gonna miss the deadline by council meeting." I just think there's gotta be a better way to do that. I've never understood why we approve block parties. It's just a political pageant issue thing. Let's just get on with it. All right? That's all it is. Somebody's gotta run over to my house so I can sign it? "Rick, where are you?" "Well, I'm home." "Well, where are you gonna be home?" "You gotta sign this for us."
That's true. They'd be down trying to get my signature.
It's silly, it's silliness. So we need to rethink all of that. In my mind, we got a staff that is far more, if, trust me, I've never heard Iris Vaneger before, for a long time. Katie buttons it up, and all our department heads, you know, say, "Hey, it's okay." If the chief says it's okay, who am I to say it's not? It's a waste of time, by the way. So that being said, I'm...
Thank you.
Alderman, let me just be clear. When I got on council floor, the block party was on the agenda only, only, to let everyone know block parties are going on, not to dictate when, where, and how.
Right.
So I don't know where this really came about, that we had to go through what we're going through now. Yeah, I just don't know. Personally, when I used to do block parties, people would call me, and I filled out the paperwork.
Yeah.
I filled out the paperwork, did it, and sent it over to, they had to have it in by Monday, and I know they did it on Wednesday, so the departments could fill it, but all of this, it was no need of Alderman's signature, they just let me know, I did everything, everything. And I kind of caution us about getting these signatures, it isn't, that was not the spirit of block parties.
No.
So, but to let everybody all know, in October, we're gonna be coming back as a group, our special events committee, which please, fire public words, myself, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna revamp this, but block parties, I don't know where all those block parties are.
It's special, we're legislators, not governors.
So we'll come back with something that will be a little bit more easy legislative to deal with, so we put all of the, making sure we get all the information that's necessary for these events to move forward. So give us a little time. This was the first year of the new ordinance, and let me tell you what happened with our special events. We started just getting so many down at Steiner Pavilion. Steiner Pavilion went from zero usage to almost 100 of them over summertime, and it was just making sure that we covered ourselves. That was the goal of it. So we anticipated to have something, but it really got overwhelmed. And October, we'll bring some back to you, the next way we'll go from there. Alderman Taylor.
I feel the same way, like I don't necessarily need to fill paperwork out, but I do think that the aldermen should be notified of it so that they're aware of it, and as long as we're notified, like I did one this week with the clerk's office, and it was all done by, I usually send them in by fax or scanning them, that's, you know, but there was one that was submitted that I did not know, and they wanted my signature, so as long as I know, I don't care how we do it.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I always wanted to know when there's a, because you want to set fire. We will continue to do it, and I just assumed that that was happening, and it was, but I think sometimes they come in late or whatever, but we definitely will let you know.
Mayor, if I could validate Alderman Taylor's truth, because they appreciate when they see our face to know that he has...
Yes, yes, you do.
And we definitely need to know, because there's so much going on.
You will know, believe me, because I want to know. Alderman Taylor, Turner.
All right, so, yeah, I totally agree, I don't think we need to give permission slips to have a block party to, just for the sake of giving a signature. However, we also have to consider, we're closing a public street, right? And I think we need, not only does Alderman need to know, but if you're closing a street, it needs to have a council's nod of approval, we need to take a vote on that, or something. I mean, Greg, I mean, what if we, somebody decides they're gonna have a block party on Grand Avenue?
No, no, no.
How will we know, how will we know to say no?
No, no, I, you know, don't want to belabor this, but typically, we do not and will not give permission to block off any of our major...
Right, we understand it, but if they don't have to come and ask for permission, we ain't gonna, we're not gonna even know.
The board should catch that, and then the mayor would catch it, or the chief would catch it, and say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, you wanna, no, no, hold up."
Yeah, it goes through, it goes through your police, fire, and public works. Those three department heads always say yea and nay, and if it's a no from either one of them, typically we'll tell them, "You can't do this street, but maybe you can do another street."
Yeah, I get it, I get it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying the idea of...
No, we will be informed.
All right, maybe I misunderstood...
From a standpoint, do you need the Alderman to sign off on it and everything? That's probably...
Right, so I got that, but maybe I misunderstood the direction I was going in, that I thought we were talking about, or I misunderstood that we were saying there would be no need for block parties to be approved by the city council. You still come for us? Okay, all right, good.
Probably gonna have it on the agenda just a blanket, but we will administer it, we will take care of it in the House and make sure.
Cool.
But I agree, everyone will be notified.
Good, thank you.
All right?
And then, the other thing about the special events, I totally agree with Alderman Moiseo. If someone's having an event on their property, no need for us to get involved in that, we shouldn't be charging extra fees, giving permission slips and any of that stuff. Special events should be reserved for events where people are utilizing city-owned property, public property, the Steiner Pavilion, one of our parking lots, blocking Genesee Street or whatever, exactly what special...
I hear you loud and clear. This is the plus for me, believe me. All right. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to congratulate you, to the Puerto Rican Society, an outstanding event this past weekend, so those of you that had the opportunity to go there, the facility looks excellent from the rehab, from the water damage, and the food was great also.
Always.
In the fourth ward, we're gonna be having Operation Clean Suite the month of September. That information will be on the website, city website, as well as on our Facebook. The first one will be on Saturday, September 14th, at Budrigg and Washington Street, from 7:30 to 10 a.m. The second one will be at Hyde Park School, September 21st, on Saturday, 7:30 to 10 o'clock. Also, the third one will be September 28th, at Victory and Glen Rock, which is the south building of the Washington campus, and we're working on a site at M.L.K. and Julian, which will be on possibly... King and Julian, which will be on, possibly, we're looking at September the sixteenth, so we'll have to work that out, from eight to three o'clock. So once again, we want our residents to get those things that need to be thrown away, look at the information regarding those items, and will not be accepted. Also, I want to encourage all the neighborhoods to give them a lot of block parties, because I think it's important that we know our neighbors. Also encourage you to help set up the neighborhood logic programs in the fourth ward. We want to continue to make sure that that area is clean and safe. Thank you.
Alderman Newsa.
I guess we're having a whole bunch of clean sweeps. The fifth ward is gonna have their Operation Clean Sweep Saturday, September the fourteenth as well. It's gonna be at the corner of Delaware and Greenwood Avenue, seven to ten-thirty A.M., and items are listed on the flyer, city website, as well as on my Facebook page. I want to encourage you, if you have electronics, TVs, tires, please feel free to bring those as well, there'll be a city truck there to take those items. And to also mention that you can always take those items to Public Works and dispose of them freely. When the TVs are on your parkway, they will not be picked up. You have to dispose of them yourself, or take this opportunity to bring them on Saturday, Saturday, September fourteenth. Again, thank you so much. If you have any questions regarding this, please feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
All right, thank you. In the sixth ward, I want to just thank again and recognize, the Public Works Department is doing a phenomenal job, they continue their efforts in maintaining neighborhood cleanliness, but also, last week, we had really heavy rains, and Fairfield Court flooded. I was over there cleaning gutters and storm drains, as I did throughout the ward, and when I saw the level of flooding at Fairfield Court, I called Public Works, and they responded immediately and sucked out the drains and alleviated the flooding. And then we realized there was also significant deterioration of the pavement in Fairfield Court this week. They patched all of that in preparation for a more intense repair effort, so big kudos to Public Works teams out there. Also, Public Works has painted, repainted all of the crosswalks. We have four schools in the fourth, sixth ward, and they repainted all of the crosswalks near those four schools. And then generally, the code and code compliance and building departments are doing phenomenal work in the sixth ward with notices of violations and citations for unsafe, unsanitary conditions. And there's, it seems to me, because I'm constantly in my ward, it seems to be an uptick in illegal dumping, and it's, I just, it's a pet peeve of my neighborhood cleanliness, but I just ask that all of my neighbors, if you see illegal dumping, you know, call the police if you see them doing it, if you can get the information, a tag or something, but other than that, call Public Works, call me directly. I like to be involved and knowledgeable of everything that goes on in the war, so call me at eight-four-seven-four-four-five-three-seven-eight-eight. And, you know, just, let's work to keep our neighborhood clean. It's very important. We do not want our ward to become something it's not supposed to be. Safe and clean is the theme for sixth ward. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I would just like to thank all the citizens that came and spoke today. I know that it is nerve-wracking sometimes, and we did have a very big crowd, but again, thank you for your patience, thank you for your input, it's all valuable. As my colleague said earlier, this is how things get done. So I congratulate everyone that showed up. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry, I was asked to share that there was only one minor injury with the microburst that occurred earlier on York House and Lewis, I believe is the location. There are pictures already on the internet, and it looks pretty scary, so thank you.
The power is back on. Second, to talk about the painting of our crosswalk, everybody, when you see our crossing guards out there, give them a thank you. They do an awesome job with these kids, and some of these kids are pretty tough, as I was, so give them a hearty thank you, as in our least, be counted in Waukegan, twenty-twenty six, he's coming. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Seager, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass and carry.